The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have six members present, I believe we have four members in person and two on the line.
Yes.
So therefore, we have a forum. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we will move on to the reading and approving of minutes. Board members, we have all had an opportunity to review the minutes outlined. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
I so moved.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the motion is approved. We are now on the superintendent's report. Dr. Green?
Greetings, board members, to our JPS administrators, our staff members, to all of our scholars and parents and community partners who are joining us this evening. We'll begin, as we typically do, with our latest JPS news from the instructional television team. You can take it away, team.
Three JPS scholars are 2021 Law Day Art Contest winners. The aim of the contest is to educate participants and the public about the rule of law for ensuring an orderly and just society. The winners are Sophie Agostinelli of McWilly Elementary, Maya McGowan of Cordoza Middle School, and Sidravius Davis of Jim Hill High School. The Mississippi Bar hosted the contest. William Carey University and Jackson Public Schools are continuing their successful teacher certification program. The program is designed to place qualified teachers into classrooms and fill vacancies in areas with crucial teacher shortages. Dr. Ben Barnett of William Carey and JPS Superintendent, Dr. Eric L. Green renewed the partnership during a recent signing ceremony. The memorandum of understanding extends the alliance for three more years. Thirty-five JPS employees are currently enrolled in the program. The Mississippi School Board Association has selected Dr. Kathleen Grigsby as part of the Perspective Superintendent Leadership Academy. She was selected as one of approximately thirty administrators from around the state. The MSBA Perspective Superintendents Academy was created as a professional development program designed to prepare potential applicants for the position of superintendent in Mississippi public schools. Dr. Grigsby currently serves as JPS Assistant Superintendent for the elementary division. Please be reminded that masks or face coverings are required for all JPS athletic events. The Jackson Public Schools clear bag policy also remains in effect. The policy covers all sporting events and limits the size and type of bags that may be brought into athletic facilities. The type of bags allowed through stadium gates are transparent plastic vinyl or PVC that do not exceed twelve inches by six inches by twelve inches, one gallon transparent plastic freezer bag, Ziploc bag, or similar. Exceptions will be made for medically necessary items after proper inspection at the gate. For more information about the clear bag policy, please contact the JPS Athletics Department at (600) 960-8825. General admission tickets for local JPS high school football games are available for purchase through the Girl Fan Tickets App. The app is free. The Jackson Public School District is celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month. Celebrations kicked off September fifteenth and will continue through October fifteenth with special activities each week. Please visit our website to learn more about these exciting weekly celebrations. The Jackson Public Schools Human Resources Office of Recruitment is hosting an informational session regarding licensure guidelines for teachers interested in obtaining and/or completing teacher certification. The meeting will be held from six to seven thirty PM Thursday, September thirtieth, at Kirksey Middle School. Participants can also attend virtually via Zoom. Please visit our website for more information about the event and for a link and pass code to the virtual meeting. JPS Middle Schools hosted a COVID-19 vaccination blitz. The inoculation sites were held at all JPS middle schools. Specials only of the Pfizer vaccine were available to parents, faculty, staff, and the local community. The vaccination events were in partnership with the Mississippi State Department of Health, Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity, and Delta Sigma Theta Authority. The district's official mobile app is now available. Get access to news, the district's directory, and much more. Download it on Google Play and the Apple App Store. Search for Jackson Public Schools MS. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools and on Twitter at JPS District. You can also watch all JPS programming on our YouTube channel at JPS ITV and on Comcast Channels eighteen and nineteen. JPS ITV and on Comcast Channel.
So as always, we want to thank our ITV instructional television team for pulling together those highlights and helping us to remain informed of all of the wonderful things that are happening throughout JPS land. And as you see, lots of programs are happening, lots of engaged young people excited about programs for young people and for our team members and community. Board members, moving forward with my remarks, I want to thank you for your engagement during the recent work session on JPS properties. As you know, we're preparing to issue a request for a proposal, an RFP, to support our comprehensive land use study. Our evolving property strategy for shuttered and sixteenth section properties is as follows, and again, this is evolving, but that our properties, those that are not directly contributing to learning or supporting functions of our scholars and team members will be used to generate continuing revenue streams that, one, support learning and development, two, provide additional supports to scholars, families, and communities, and, three, that contribute to the quality of life for the communities in which they're situated. And again, that's the evolving statement as we've continued our conversations with you and deepening our understanding of the opportunities that exist for our properties, especially those that have been shuttered in our sixteenth section lands. At our last meeting, as you'll recall, you approved our request to engage Duval Decker to lead the study effort around Lake Haiko. And I know that there's been lots of interest around that property, and so we're excited to move that work forward. As we've been discussing those possibilities there and thinking about the larger, more comprehensive study of all of our properties and shuttered buildings, it occurred to us that there could be an opportunity to pull those two efforts together, the study of, specifically of Lake Haiko, and the study across all of our properties. And so, wanted to just pause to get any reactions from you, board members, about the possibility of engaging the same vendor or partner to support that study across all properties. The major benefit there is efficiency. We've got someone who's already now engaged with us specifically to work in one, on the one body of property, Lake Haiko, and just want to see if there are any reactions or druthers in terms of perhaps working with them across the, all of our properties. And again, the major benefit there would just be around efficiency. They're already working with us, and we could expand that work. Want to see if there are any reactions to that, any strong desire to either go that way or to look at other entities. We're open, just want to see if there's any reaction at this point, board members.
I don't know that I've got a strong reaction either way, but, you know, certainly in terms of the efficiency of it, and of course, knowing just the professional capacity of Duval Decker, I think it makes sense, but I'd be open to listening to other comments. Like I said, I don't think that I would be strongly opposed to it on the surface of it. Makes sense to me.
Honorable Superintendent, I like Dr. Luckett.
Can you bring the mic closer, Mr. Figures? Thank you.
Honorable Superintendent, I like Dr. Luckett. Think Decker, Duval Decker is a great firm, and they've worked with the district for quite a spell. However, my reservation would be, I don't think that I have enough information about what all Decker could do in this regard.
Yes, sir.
To make a decision that I might be held to in the future.
Yes, sir.
I don't think the district has ever done what you frame as a comprehensive land use study, and what all is it going to involve, and, you know, that I'd like to have more information on that.
That's fair. Yes, sir.
I agree with...
Sorry, I'm getting our sea legs back.
I agree with them. Now, I'm familiar with the company in another situation and everything, but I too would like a bit more information, you know, in regards to, you know, how they will function in this particular instance.
Any other quick reactions?
This is Joan Hairston. I agree with the concept of gathering as many brilliant prospective partners who have knowledge of the work that we're trying to accomplish would join us. But of course, a little bit more information would be helpful, but I like the concept and the direction that this class is gesturing.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that feedback.
Ms. Thompson or Ms. Johnson, any additional comments to add?
No, I agree with most of, the majority of board members. It makes sense to me to learn more and make a decision when we have more information.
I agree.
I think we have a consensus here that it would be good to get more information that, like you said, I think efficiency is, we appreciate the urgency, and we've always acted best with information to react to. So let's continue to be urgent and let's get some more information.
Yeah, that's absolutely fair, and I appreciate the, I know I put you on the spot a little bit here, just in asking for your reactions. What I didn't want to do was to expend a lot of energy building a proposal that, on the face of it, just didn't make sense to you, so this is helpful to go back to them and have some conversation about what this could look like. We're still scoping out the work ourselves, so we would absolutely have to build a stronger ask of the vendors in this effort. And of course, any contractual agreement would be brought to you all for your blessing and your approval, so I appreciate that. That's helpful as we prepare to go forward and kind of order our next steps. And I believe, oh, I'm sorry, and one other, one other thing that we discussed at the recent work session on properties was the dueling property. And you may recall that one of our next steps was to go back and do a little investigation as to that transaction and, you know, where we stand as an entity with any interest, ongoing interest in that. And while we're just beginning the investigations and reviewing the documentation from those transactions, it does look like JPS maintains an interest in the property, and so what will our attorneys, internal and external, will continue to review those documents and engage all of the involved properties to see exactly where we go there, but the initial findings is that they seem positive, and so we'll look to see where we go next with that. And bringing this up in particular because per our previous discussion, we want to make sure that future actions, decisions, that we're clear on all of the opportunities that we might have as an entity, as a school district, for engaging others around our properties, whether it's a sale outright, some kind of a lease, short or longer term, or a sale that includes some retention of interest in that property. And so, just wanted to share that update, that we're continuing our investigation, and we'll come back to you with more information, but the initial findings are positive.
Honorable Superintendent, if I may.
Yes, sir, please.
You said internal attorneys and external attorneys.
Yes, sir.
Pardon my lack of knowledge, but I don't know who the external attorneys are, or how they were selected on this matter.
Well, our initial and primary external would be our board attorney.
Oh, I can't.
Internal, external. I don't mean to distance you. And then, of course, we've got sixteenth section, our attorney that works specifically with sixteenth section property, and we have others on retainer who support us in general. Is that, yeah, yeah. Again, this is, we're still early.
We still have others, you know, I was just, but we can do that at another time rather than prolong this, but I just want to put it out there, the others.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Turner, from her presence with this board, but others.
So would you, I want to make sure I'm clear on the question. You want me to bring back all of the law firms that we engage for any kind of advice or support, and specifically on this? Okay? Because to be clear, we haven't engaged anyone new to do any work on this. We've simply leaned on our existing relationships. Our board attorney, we've got a sixteenth section attorney who does, runs point on all of our sixteenth section properties, and then we've got at least one other firm that we typically call on, Adams and Reese, that we typically call on for a variety of legal matters. So that's our, that's the other.
And Dr. Green, my understanding is our sixteenth section attorney is Jeffrey Anders with Butler Snow?
Yes, sir.
David.
David, sorry.
David, yes. Okay. All right, so just wanted to give that quick update, and I know that probably caused for more questions and desire and more information. We've got the same. I'm excited to learn more and believe that the story only gets better from here. All right.
I just want, I want to make one comment, Dr. Green. I think that that is exciting and that is absolutely great news for the district, and I hope it pans out that we do have an investment.
Amen to that.
Yeah, that is so true, and I thought I was affirming you earlier, Dr. Green, that I was on mute, so I'll just say very quickly that I appreciate the effort of gathering as many voices and knowledge as we work through this, thinking through our opportunities with our properties. And while I totally understand that at this level we are engaging, you know, the legal experts, but I do hope that there would be a time before we make a final decision, I'll just say that, and I'm sure it will happen, that we will engage other community leaders who are out there percolating with ideas of their own, such that when we come to a decision, we'll be all on the same page as best possible.
Yes, ma'am, and I know I moved a little quickly through those couple of points, but I want to separate the study. Absolutely, there's no effort around that study and discussions around any of our properties that does not include some broader engagement. The specific point on engaging with our attorneys, specific to the dueling property, was just, is just to understand what already exists, what that transaction entailed, and, you know, any retention of interest in that property. That was the only point around the attorneys there.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, and no, at least at this point, no decision, there's no decision point for us as we currently sit, just continuing to understand what exists and any implications for us, financial or otherwise.
Right, and I think I misspoke when I identified the attorneys. In my mind, I was really thinking of all of those on the JPS team and our external partners in helping us think through all of our properties.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, so thank you for that clarification.
Understood, yes, and thank you. All righty, so I want to give you, board members, just, you know, we're about halfway through the first marking period, the first term, if you can believe it, and so we want to give just a little bit of an update there, and I've got some friends on deck to provide a little more feedback for us, but each year we identify representatives of scholars, parents, teachers, and administrators to serve on our advisory committees, to make recommendations and to share their perspectives on various aspects of our work here in the district. And although they're not decision-making bodies, advisory committees do help us to make more informed decisions and to support the broader community in understanding the why behind our tough decisions that we make from time to time. I'm excited to launch the twenty-one, twenty-two advisory committees, and you see some names flash there on the screen, and that's, again, our scholars, our parents, teachers, and administrators, representatives from each of those stakeholder groups. And I look forward to working closely with those representative stakeholders as we move forward. And for those board members who are joining us via telephone, we'll be sure to share those names with you as well. Board members, I believe it is that we, as I said, that we're about halfway, or believe it or not, we're about halfway through this first nine weeks of school. We've already started with interim assessments, and many of our scholars have taken those. And even with the continuing challenges related to the pandemic, our scholars seem generally happy to be back in school, and I'm also pleased to see that various programs and activities are coming back online, such as our fall athletics, college fairs, school spirit events, and parent nights, and several other things. And as you know, we launched our after-school program to provide our scholars with rich learning experiences out of the regular school day, and that's across the district, and so excited with some of the early returns and early remarks with regard to our after-school programming, and that's notwithstanding some of the logistical challenges around busing and that sort of thing. Similar to what I'm hearing from other district superintendents across the country, though, we have experienced some issues with student, disruptive student behaviors as our scholars are continuing to settle back into the rigors of school. And this isn't completely different from, you know, other times that we've had to kind of remind scholars of expectations and help them to make really good decisions and be their best selves. And in addition, we've experienced some challenges related to staffing shortages, and that's especially in our transportation department, as well as food supply chain delays, and even connectivity issues as we've brought more devices onto our network system. And although all of these are very real and sometimes complicated issues, I'm confident, as I've seen evidence already, that our team is working through them and setting us up for great success and a pretty productive school year. Board members, as a reminder, on September second, we launched a virtual option for our scholars in pre-K through sixth grade, and while the vast majority of our families opted for their scholars to remain in person, we did have just north of fifteen hundred scholars to go virtual when that option was presented. At this time, I'll invite our deputy superintendent, Dr. Michael Cormack, to join us for a brief update on the virtual program and just to give some sense of what's happening there. Dr. Cormack?
Great evening to Dr. Cormack, members of the board, and Dr. Green. I'm going to give just a moment to cue the PowerPoint deck, which will come, and want to share just some of our insights about our virtual learning program for pre-kindergarten through sixth-grade scholars so far. So our first slide indicates some of the quick facts about our virtual learning program. And as you know, our core values, I want to highlight in this presentation, the core value of equity. As you know, you all were driven by our core value of equity and providing an equitable learning experience during this pandemic, specifically for our pre-kindergarten through sixth-grade scholars who are not eligible at this time for vaccination. So in the next slide, we indicate a few quick facts about our virtual option. Initially, as Dr. Green has mentioned, we had one thousand five hundred and thirty-three scholars that changed their instructional option to virtual. As of today, this afternoon, presently, one thousand and twenty-five students are remaining in virtual instruction, which is a decrease of thirty-three percent, about a third since virtual enrollment and our process began on September seventh. As our parents and families explored that option, many determined that they wanted to continue with in-person instruction, and so reached out to their school principals and have been welcomed back to in-person instruction. As we know, the pandemic was something we wanted to do to be responsive to learning needs, but many, as that option has become available, have decided to go back to in-person instruction, and so we do see that number on the decline. This graphic, bar graph, represents our virtual enrollment by grade, and so you'll notice some patterns in the number. We have our smallest number of virtually enrolled scholars in pre-kindergarten, which is the seventy-three, and they go chronologically in order, so seventy-three pre-kindergarten scholars, one hundred and twenty-five kindergarten scholars, first grade, and so on through sixth grade, and you'll notice a decline at sixth grade, but almost stair steps at each of the grade levels up to fifth grade, with our largest number of virtually enrolled scholars at fifth grade, with two hundred and eighty-eight scholars presently enrolled. On our next slide, we'll skip through that, please. Seems like portions of the presentation have been edited, so if you'll pull down the slide, I can share with you just the other brief updates that we have. So out in the classroom, one of the things that we've been able to see and observe in action in terms of opportunities are the following. One of the things that we're excited to celebrate is the fact that we are one-to-one, and so each of those scholars are connected to a device and have the opportunity to engage. The challenge is, we were not able to provide hotspots and connectivity to each child, and so many of the parents who adopted the virtual option were relying on their own at-home connectivity, and there has been some connectivity challenge. We are excited about the opportunity. Our principals, based on those parents and families that opted for virtual instruction, did so, and we weren't aware, we couldn't forecast the number of parents and families that would adopt a virtual approach. So we had our principals collaborating over a weekend to really work the system and to look at their data, and across our elementary divisions, Division One and Division Two, we've worked to stand up virtual classrooms such that teachers can teach wholly and exclusively virtual scholars or in-person scholars. One of the challenges that, from last spring, that we saw nationally, was the challenge of trying to simulcast, which basically means that you are presenting both to in-person and virtual scholars at the same time. And of course, it's often virtual scholars that get short shrift in a simulcasted environment because, of course, the students that are immediately close- because, of course, the students that are immediately closest to you, you know, tend to take more of your attention. So that was one of our guardrails as we set up this process, but what that has meant is that the in-person instructor that our scholars may have had for the first few weeks of instruction may have shifted as we needed to stand up virtual classrooms. And so, we've really worked to be equitable about that, but what it does mean is that across divisions, you may have a first-grade classroom that is representative of a few different schools within the division. One of the exciting opportunities that we've lifted across elementary, there have been virtual family events to introduce our parents and families who have adopted this instruction to the new principal perhaps, or to acclimate them to a new instructor if there's been an instructional change, and also just to the expectations of the program. So those events have been really helpful in establishing relationships between families and their virtual instructor. And we're continuing to provide professional development for our teachers, who are continuing to work to build their skill and support virtual engagement, because it's a challenge when you can't offer proximity or potentially check for understanding in the ways that you would do in an in-person environment. But we're excited to continue to offer this opportunity for our scholars, and at this point, I would love to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, board members, any questions for Dr. Cormack?
Let me quickly note, I was asked to also address attendance, and that was what's going to be in the next slide. Our attendance for our virtual scholars, the ADA, is 92.2%, slightly better than our in-person scholars, so we're excited about that. They are attending school, they heard our message and your policy mandating attendance. Of course, one of the challenges, however, is it is a full instructional day, and so we do anticipate that some of the decline from our earlier numbers and earlier enrollment is predicated on the fact that it's a full instructional day. But we're happy to report that the initial attendance, the ADA, is quite good, 92.2%. And so, while anecdotally, we anticipated that it might be slightly worse than in-person attendance, the data doesn't bear that out.
I guess, one question I have, what are we learning from standing up a virtual program that is independent from, not independent, but, you know, we've talked about setting up a virtual school, and in some ways, it's a natural experiment. Any early findings from this effort?
Well, certainly, the finding around attendance was one that I didn't anticipate, but of course, we want to be driven by the data. We are, one of the things that is interesting is corroborated by the other data that I didn't report on, is we had an additional 146 scholars that have, were not previously enrolled in the district, that did enroll once the option was offered. And so, as we, you know, worked to arrest some enrollment decline, that was a promising finding that there may be some families out there who were very legitimately concerned about the pandemic and enrolling, and may have been learning from home for a period of time until we offered the option. And so, 146 families did enroll that were not registered at all, so that's a promising finding. On the instructional front, we continue to learn just about the ways in which teachers engage students virtually. It's been a great opportunity for us to test our wares. I mean, when we were in-person before pre-pandemic, there was a lot of pushes and nudges for meaningful integration of technology. I think the rubber meets the road when you need to check for understanding and make certain that students are mastering content in a virtual environment, and so I've really been impressed by our teachers' ability to go out and search for software in support with our instructional technology teams, things that help to check for understanding. And so, you can't simply ask students to understand and then get muted responses and no feedback. You need to use the emoticons to raise a hand, just the ways in which they're engaging with the apps and the data, I think has been great. And it's also encouraged a lot of shared use platforms, so even in a math classroom today at Timberline, I was excited to see the use of a clickboard where the teachers and the scholars were able to share a screen and work math problems together, and then lift their virtual responses, and it gave opportunities for real-time feedback. And so, with the institution of those kinds of practices and sharing those practices across the district, I think we can realize some really exciting opportunities.
I'd add there, I don't know that these are learnings per se, but areas where I expect that we will be learning some really, really important lessons, one around just how to, how to support and get the most benefit from teacher leadership around innovation, and what teachers already know and what they're learning and what they're doing that's outside of a district-led initiative, those sorts of things, to the extent that we can continue to rein those in and learn from them and codify them, so it's not just this one super great teacher in this one classroom, but those ideas and strategies are shared across the district more so. I think that's one thing that I'm hopeful that we will learn more about how to, how to get those, there's a phrase for it, it's something around dissonance, but anyway, but to how to get those lessons shared more broadly. Another thing is, just how to continuing and deepening our understanding and our skill around virtual engagement of scholars, engagement not just answering questions, but engagement of the heart, right? The kind of deep engagement that we try to create when we have close proximity and build culture. How do we do that in a virtual environment? It can be done, but what are the strategies there? And what are some of the same strategies that work in person that could be leveraged in a virtual setting? Those are some of the things that, because we spend so, so much time developing culture, developing relationships and all of that in the classroom, I can't imagine that the need just goes away now that we're virtual. And so, how do we do that in this virtual setting to get some of the same benefits around engagement and a sense of belonging and commitment to engaging and persevering through really difficult content and assignments and those sorts of things, so.
What grade level would the virtual school be? I mean, are you considering for?
Yes, so, right now, of course, we have our virtual option for our pre-K through sixth-grade scholars, but as a complement of our Office of Innovative Strategy led by Dr. Moss, we're currently in the design phases of a virtual high school. And it's interesting that you should note that our partner in that work, Able Schools, is in the district this week and conducting empathy interviews with our high school educators. And so, they were at Forest Hill today with teachers and getting, collecting feedback about their experiences having engaged in the spring, so that we could bring together some of the salient learnings from that experience as a natural experiment to what we hope to envision to launch next fall. And so, we're really privileged to have this year-long design phase process where we can engage meaningfully and qualitative feedback, we'll be engaging with parents to learn what it is that they want, but we really see it as an opportunity to address enrollment decline, to really think about ways that we can expand access to equitable course offerings, and just further that deeper level of engagement for our scholars that Dr. Green referenced.
Sounds exciting.
It's exciting times.
We just have to pull it off, right?
There it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cormack, for that update, and just a huge thank you in their absence to all of the teachers and leaders and families who are continuing to be patient with us as we strive to provide these varied programs and initiatives to meet the varied needs. Board members, rooted in strategic commitments, two, innovative teaching and learning, three, talented and empowered teams, and five, a culture of accountability and excellence, JPS educators regularly participate in professional development. Dr. Kimberly Smith, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, will join us now to provide a briefing and some updates on our curricular materials as well as professional development offerings. Dr. Smith?
All right, great evening, board president Seevak, members of the board, superintendent Green, members of our JPS team, and to our community. It does give me great privilege to talk about and give an update on our core curriculum resources and aligned professional development. And as we always begin, can everyone hear me? Okay, so as long as we begin, we begin with our mission. At Jackson Public Schools, we develop scholars through world-class learning experiences to attain an exceptional knowledge base, critical and relevant skill sets, and the necessary dispositions for great success. And with our vision, we continue to prepare our scholars to achieve globally, to contribute locally, and to be fulfilled individually. And as Dr. Green has already talked about, our innovative teaching and learning is one of our primary commitments for the Office of Teaching and Learning, as we continue to have innovative curriculum materials for our scholars as well as training for our teachers. Our core values is represented throughout our core curriculum resources and our professional development, as we provide equity for both our teachers and our students. We provide excellence through having a high-level, high-quality instructional materials, growth mindset shifting, we just talked about virtual schools, so shifting in how we continue to educate our scholars, relevance, making sure that our students can find themselves within those curriculum materials, building relationships, and establishing those positive and respectful cultures. So, the purpose of the presentation, we're going to talk just briefly and go through a couple of slides about our textbook adoption process, articulate and explain our core curriculum resources and their appropriate usage. You'll hear about how we utilize that to align our professional development for our teachers and the effective implementation of those core curriculum resources, as well as hear from some of our instructional staff on the use of core curriculum resources. So, just briefly, our core curriculum selection process is led by Ms. Lori Harris, our textbook coordinator, and that committee consists of teachers, school administrators, as well as district personnel. And once that committee is selected, the textbook vendors are chosen to present to schools, and that list is normally provided to us by the Mississippi Department of Ed because of the high-quality instructional materials list, and those textbook vendors must be on that list in order to provide services and resources to our district. And after those books have been, they do their presentation, a textbook committee rates each presentation with a rubric, that even if we go through state and federal programs and do a RFP, we still have a rubric that must be presented in order for us to get those core curriculum resources. We then present the committee's recommendation to our JPS leadership team, and then we bring it to our board for approval. And so, just briefly about our JPS core curriculum, we start with pre-K with a strong start, and implementing highly, high-quality developmentally appropriate curriculum with pre-K and the world, opening the world of learning, known as OWL, that's what our pre-K scholars engage in every day with their teachers to help develop their oral language skills and literacy skills, and provide guidance for teachers with a variety of materials to implement, and we also begin foundations, our FONIS curriculum, which helps our kids, our students, to begin their phonemic awareness and word study, and also contributes to how they develop fluency skills, vocabulary development, and applications of strategies for understanding the text. And the next slide shows the kit that our pre-K teachers receive for OWL, and it is very comprehensive and ensuring that teachers and students have everything that they need in order to effectively implement the curriculum. The next slide shows what our teachers get and the students get in our Wilson's Foundations Kit, so that FONIS is not just a sitting kit, but teachers and students can manipulate language arts at an early age with letter tiles, writing strips, workbooks, and things of that sort, to help students develop their oral language fluency and handwriting skills alike. As we move into commitment two, we're making sure, ensuring that we implement coherent and focused curriculum as outlined in our strategic plan. With our curriculum for K through 5, Great Minds Within Wisdom helps to build a background knowledge and vocabulary, is text-dependent, and it deepens and has a deepening understanding for core knowledge. We also, for our virtual scholars that are participating virtually, we have Great Minds Within Wisdom NSYNC, which helps, is formatted for virtual instruction, so it provides the same high-quality material, but it's formatted for virtual instruction. And then from McGraw-Hill Study Sync, that's 6 through 12, where they, 6 through 8, build strong skills based on foundations, and 9 through 12 focuses on independent critical thinking and analysis skills. In math, we have core curriculum, our corporate curriculum resources with Ready Math, grade band with K through 8, it is aligned to our Mississippi College and Career Ready Standards, it follows a routine where students are engaged and working through our mathematical practices each day, and it allows them to experience discourse within their learning through those rigorous practice opportunities that build their conceptual understanding. And then in high school, specifically for Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry, we utilize Envisions, and it helps to emphasize conceptual understanding and helps them to continue to think critically. In science, 4th and 5th grade, and 6th through 8th grade, we are utilizing McGraw-Hill for integrated science and inspired science to help to continue to build their inquiry base and provide those demonstrations and investigations, so that students can actually manipulate science in real-world and real-relevant experiences and not just sit and look at it. Same thing with biology, we utilize Savers Learning with Inspired Science for chemistry, physics, physical, and earth science, and it does the same thing, it allows older scholars to construct explanations for scientific phenomena and design solutions for real-world problems. And this is an example of what it looks like, and they have a virtual platform as well as hands-on demonstrations within the classroom as well. Then for our social studies platform, we also continue to use Savers Learning, and it's K through 12, and it engages students and helps develop thoughtful literate citizens, and it's scaffold according to their grade level from K through 12, where they learn about themselves and then the world beyond them. But you don't have to take my word for it, as they say, on reading rainbow. So, we did go out and we asked a couple of teachers, Ms. Gibson, who's Algebra 1 teacher at Murray High School, where she talks about how the Envision platform helps to prepare her students for the intercourse exam, which is the Algebra 1 exam, but also she enjoys the standard practice workbook because it helps to prepare them for the ACT. And then an inclusion teacher from North Jackson Elementary School talks about how she also utilizes those resources to help her differentiate instruction to ensure that every learner is, that they have access to the curriculum for every learner. And then, all of this is aligned to our three Jackson Public Schools instructional priorities. And our priorities are aligned with ABCs, A is acceleration of learning, B, balanced assessment system, and C, a culture of observation and feedback. And so, just a little bit on acceleration, we utilize a high-quality instruction at every grade level, ensuring that Tier 1 instruction occurs in the beginning, and we also looked at our data from the past three years, three to five years, and we looked at certain standards where our students were continuing to struggle, and we wanted to make sure that we provided scaffolding supports, vocabulary strategies, and writing strategies for not just those standards, but we wanted to make sure we targeted those standards so that we can see an increase on those standards as we look at those interim assessments that we've begun, and we will take our first benchmark in about a week or so, and so we're looking to see how well we are trending again in those standards. And so, again, those strategies in action. Next slide, next slide. So, these, this is what it looks like, so you have scaffolding supports, then, and that's an anchor chart, then this particular teacher may be teaching a lesson on comparing and contrasting what it would look like, questions you might be asked to kind of help to get them thinking about what questions look like that's asked under the standard that deals with comparing and contrasting. In our August TOT, Train the Trainer, and our 80% Day, we presented a vocabulary strategy called TIP, which talks about the term, provide information in a picture. So, in the middle, you will see a pre-K child from Van Winkle, and the teacher is guiding them through a vocabulary strategy, utilizing vocabulary words, where they looked at the term, they gave information about the term, and provided a picture, and at the bottom, you will also see where it's being utilized at Wells APEC as well, and then our writing strategy. And then our writing strategies, there are sentence starters that help to scaffold those students that may be struggling to write a piece of work dealing with opinion writing. So those are some, as you go through the classrooms or visits, you should see some of these activities taking place in classrooms. So with our balanced assessment system, it's providing multiple ways to assess student understanding. So we just don't want to assess students using the A, B, C, D format, but we also want to make sure we're asking appropriate questions. We're using checks for understandings throughout the lesson, providing exit tickets so that teachers can gain information where, to determine next steps, whether they should either review the lesson the next day or they should move on with performance-based assessments, project-based assessments, as well as those summits of assessments to ensure mastery of those standards, not just coverage. And then our culture of observation and feedback. This has been a really heavy lift, but we have made sure that we have aligned timely and actionable feedback to everything that we do. So just providing it not just to teachers and administrators, but also to students so that they will know how to better improve in their studies. So we're utilizing the AIC protocol, which A stands for affirm, I stands for impact, C stands for challenge or continue. So you affirm the action that you've observed, what is the impact that it has on teaching and learning, and what challenge do we, either challenge or what do we continue to ensure that the impact is making a positive change with what we're seeing in the classroom. It's immediate and it's actionable. Professional learning opportunities, so you will see we have monthly professional learning opportunities that are aligned to our instructional priorities. We have also this year intentionally aligned our Train the Trainer, our 80% Days, as well as our professional development days for our school leaders to ensure that school leaders are aware of what's taking place on those 80% Days so that they can also help us to provide, to monitor, coach, and demonstrate and model those instructional-based practices as well as looking at evaluation data to determine how we make each session a little better the next time. And so here's a snippet from our professional learning calendar, and you can see how it's aligned if you look at the audience. You have the trainers from each school, this actually occurred today, where participants, designees from each school, and some of the session also contained our school administrators, principals, and assistant principals, where they, the session they participated in, they were monitoring and maintaining fidelity to daily instructional materials. On the 80% Day, it will be providing a coherent sequence of learning through high-leverage instructional materials. So whereas teachers are providing it, administrators are monitoring it to ensure that it happens, and then it all comes through our core curriculum resources, and the outcomes are listed as well. And so we have a, from PD to implementation. We can have the PD aligned, but unless we go through and check and inspect what we expect, so in between those professional learning activities, we monitor, coach, model, and demonstrate lessons from a district-level professional development activity, then it goes to school-level PD. So as we go through and we monitor the, what's happening in schools, it may be specific schools that need support, so those are large groups. We continue to monitor, coach, model, and demonstrate lessons. Then it may be a particular grade level or content area that we have to work with, which is a small group. We continue to monitor, coach, model, and demonstrate those lessons and review data to determine the next steps. So there's a lot of things that go in between those blue boxes, but it helps to ensure that we go from the PD to implementation and execution in the classroom. And now we will hear voices from the field.
Hello, my name is Ruthie Johnson, and I am Principal of Kirkseyville School. The core curriculum resources provide our teachers with a blueprint to follow as they prepare their instruction for our scholars. These resources help them to identify the major components of the standards to help support acceleration and build background knowledge as expert in topics.
I am Jennifer Lewis. As a history instructional coach, the Savers Realized Textbook is a great tool for teachers and students. It gives teachers the ability to personalize assignments. Students have the opportunity to use learning tools to increase understanding at home or at school.
I am Anthony Moore, Principal of Casey Elementary. I love the Wooden Wisdom Curriculum because it provides teachers the opportunities to engage students with rich texts and high levels of vocabulary. As an administrator going in and observing classrooms, I'm able to easily identify what teachers have in the scaffold instruction as well as checking for understanding. The usage of the Wooden Wisdom Curriculum provides for all the engagement of our students and will ensure by the end of the year, all of our students grow to proficiency.
I'm Twana Freeman Mallard, fourth-grade teacher at Wilkins Elementary School. I enjoy utilizing quality instructional materials to teach writing in my classroom to my scholars. Complex text, read, and wooden wisdom allows me to create writing prompts that cultivate writers in my classroom. The integration of social studies topics with literacy engages my scholars. They highly benefit from this by building their knowledge of topics. This integration allows them to learn writing skills as they learn about the world around them.
I am Dr. Shalita Brand, Principal of Probine High School. The feature I like most about the JPS curriculum documents is the one-click access to high-quality instructional materials all in a single document. The one-click access allows teachers to focus on engaging and impactful instructional delivery in real-time to our students rather than focus on the location of appropriate materials. The feedback that we provide to teachers is now content savvy, and it focuses on specific strategies around acceleration and balanced assessment.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Um. I see a lot of excitement in those voices, and I just hope that, I look forward to that excitement transcending to all of the persons. And then I know that our scores will go up, up, and away.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Hilliard, you, that's a great pivot to a question I wrote down in my notebook, which is, Dr. Smith, when, when, so recognizing last year was an odd year, not odd, it was just, you know, it was what it was.
Yes, sir.
And this year, we're getting back. When are the score, when will we know that this is, the vendors that we selected? Because I remember, I think most folks on this board were a part of approving these. And so when, in your opinion, will we get, are they scores from this year, are they scores from next year that will send a signal as to the efficacy of the curriculum?
Great question. So we're looking at our scores from the 2021 school year as a baseline, and so utilizing that, making sure that we have, we've been charged to reset. And so going back and ensuring that our teachers really know how to implement the curriculum and execute those on-grade level strategies, and that brings about our instructional priorities as it relates to make sure that we provided the feedback that's needed in order to ensure that our teachers are really, have infidelity to the core curriculum activities as well as the resources that comes along with those as far as the platforms and everything. So it's not, I won't say at the end of the year, but when we do those presentations where we are actually looking at our interim assessments, our benchmark assessments, then we'll be able to provide information as to show how these core curriculums help to increase or what need areas of improvement that we still need to work on. I know with continued training, then we'll be able to see, teachers will feel more comfortable as well because last year, it wasn't anonymously. However, looking at how our teachers really embraced last year, though, a lot of them took the time to actually learn the curriculum. And so this year, except for our, you know, new teachers that worked with us on last year, but then this year, they're actually, first of all, they're excited for the students to be back in school. And so that's going to make an impact as well. So I won't, I can't just say it will be one factor that will be, that will contribute to that, but there is a variety of factors that will contribute to those increased scores. One being students being back face-to-face, but others, teachers being able to really be more hands-on with the core curriculum resources with their scholars.
And I'll add to that, our data team is working with the school leadership team to reset on annual goals per school. And I believe we're actually setting goals and creating plans for individual scholars as well. But annual goals per school that will still work towards and in service of the strategic plan goals that we've set. We've not abandoned those. We're still working towards those same goals, even given all the craziness that we've had to live through over the last nearly two years. So schools are resetting their annual goals just to rethink how we get there from here. And we will be able to utilize the interim assessments as an indicator, one indicator of some of the successes there.
Great. And we don't, we're all in as far as the, like, this is our, as I understand it, the curriculum lineup. We've gone through from pre-K to 12. We've got our, this is our curriculum, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There may be a few additional, like, in the arts, correct?
For the electives.
For electives.
For electives, those things, I think it was a couple of board meetings back. So those were really our students that are in our elective courses will, you know, get the latest information, hot-off-the-press information, have books that have information that's occurring right now. So we've been able to provide that support, K through 12, for our core curriculum as well as for our elective courses as well.
But yes, these are our core curricular materials.
Okay.
And frankly, I'm just excited that we're, that we have some stability there, and we can continue to build from there, and teachers can get more and more familiar and school leaders and scholars and all of that. And the things that you expect to see in terms of the strength of our pre-K and K scholars as they move into first and second grade, with stronger materials, with teachers using certain strategies, as you start to see those scholars move up, we'll start to see, we should see more and more of the benefits of that stronger foundation, that strong start as they, as they meet with more rigorous content further up. Any other questions or comments, board members? I want to publicly thank again Dr. Smith and all of the leaders, both in central office and from our schools, helping to, who've helped us to make some of these smart decisions, I believe, around curriculum materials and helping to bring to life the plans that you saw here. Just in closing regarding this piece, I've said it before, I'll say it again, our central offices exist to support schools, period, dot the end. We exist to support schools in supporting our scholars and families. And so our job is to ensure that we're lifting them up, blocking and tackling all of that work so that they can do the really smart and important work that happens only in classrooms. That's where the magic happens. And so we're trying to live that motto and that mantra. Thank you again, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Lastly, board members, Jackson Public Schools has created a strong tradition around summer reading. And the JPS Summer Reading Program promotes continued academic growth, encourages our scholars to become lifelong readers and learners, and helps to ward off some of that infamous summer learning slide. JPS scholars are expected to read three books at a minimum, three books during the summer months. There's one that's required for them, one title, and then two titles of their choice. Well, these four amazing scholars far exceeded, you can, I'm getting all tongue-twisted because I'm so excited to introduce them to you. They far exceeded the reading expectation and learned, and earned the title of top reader. And so I'd like to congratulate from Obama Magnet scholar Denila Parker for reading 200 books. Come on up, sweetheart. Come on up, sweetheart. And right up here. And from Casey Elementary, scholar Elena Hatcher, who read 62 books. Is she with us this evening? Not with us. From Cardo, oh, she is, yes. Come on up, sweetheart. Congratulations to you. And from Cardozo Middle School, our scholar, Denage Trimble. Denage Trimble. Who read 26 books. And as you know, as they get older, those books get bigger and more difficult. And then also from Jim Hill scholar Asia Ramsey for reading 31 books. Is Asia with us? Okay. So each of these top readers are receiving a trophy, a high reader medal, and that's enough, right? Well, in addition, they're receiving a Verizon Samsung Galaxy tablet. They can put some titles on those tablets and read from there. So I want to congratulate them. And in addition to these individual scholars and their recognitions, I'd like to recognize the following schools with the highest number of books read. Obama Magnet School, 1,747 books read. And from Casey Elementary School, 870 books read. Northwest Jackson Middle School, 421 books read. Then lastly, Jim Hill High School, 290 books read. Congratulations to all of those schools. And to thank our assistant superintendents for joining us and recognizing each of those schools. I think we're going to take a couple of beautiful pictures, and maybe I'll mess them up. Hey! Casey Elementary School Principal is here, thank you so much. Congratulations. And a congratulations again to all of our scholars. Am I joining? We were remarking before we began the meeting, it's so nice to have young people in our meetings again and to have this time together as a community. We will continue to bring updates around what's happening in the district and as well to highlight the amazing scholars and team members who exist throughout JPS. With that, I turn the meeting back over to you, President Seback, members of the board. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and I just will echo your comments that it is great to have students back in the boardroom. It's great to be back together and appreciate everyone who's done, taken the efforts to create an environment where we could do this safely. Now, we move on to the public comment section of our board meeting. Attorney Turner, do we have any participants for a public comment?
Yes, you do. You have one person who signed up to address you during public participation. Mr. George Stewart JAE would like to address you regarding the mandatory vaccination policy.
Great. Well, before I get started, thank you, Attorney Turner. Community members who would like to make comments should email their requests to Ms. Rosalyn Williams at roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 4:00 PM on the day of the board meeting. Before we get started, I just want to set the expectations for our people who are providing public comment. You will have three minutes for your comments. The board believes the public's comment- Uh, the board believes the public's comment is very important. The board will listen and consider comments, but will not respond at this time. If there is an issue that you have not taken to leadership at a particular school or to district administration, we encourage you to do so. And board members can be reached at our email addresses, which are on the JPS website.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the board, Dr. Green, again, my name is George Stewart, and I am a JPS educator as well as a president of Jackson Association of Educators. And my comments, my statement is as follows. No one is more eager to be back in the classroom with the ability to stay in the classroom than educators. Since the onset of the pandemic, M A E and J A E have said that we need to follow the science, and evidence shows that COVID-19 vaccines combined with other safety measures are the most powerful weapon we have against the pandemic. We also support regular COVID-19 testing in lieu of vaccination for those not yet vaccinated or those for whom vaccination is not medically appropriate or effective. We believe that such vaccine requirements and accommodations are an appropriate, responsible, and necessary step to ensure the safety of our school communities and the protection of our students. And while I am here to discuss the association's perspective on vaccines, I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to point out the role schools play in keeping our communities and our own families safe. I myself has lost two loved ones to COVID, and I know I am not alone. My belief in the seriousness of being vaccinated and knowing your COVID status stems from not only the science, but from my own personal loss. We've dealt with far too much of that loss in our communities, in our, in our families, and within the JPS family. As we continue to navigate the ever-evolving pandemic landscape, we must do everything in our power to prioritize the health and safety of our students. We believe that vaccination against COVID and regular testing for those not vaccinated is the most important step we can take in combating this virus and keeping our kids in school. Combined with other mitigation tactics, including testing, tracing, masking, distancing, hand washing, ventilation, cleaning, and disinfection, we can keep our kids right where they belong, inside their classrooms, learning and growing alongside their friends and school support system. Thank you.
All right, thank you for sharing your comments. All right, board members, at this time, um, we will move to the information item only section of the agenda. Um, we do have a board member report. Uh, Ms. Hilliard reached out to me, uh, with, um, some information about the legislative survey uh, from the Mississippi School Board Association. As board members know, there is probably no other person on this board who has more training hours, more leadership, um, uh, service to the Mississippi School Board Association than Ms. Hilliard. So I asked her to take this section of the agenda, so Ms. Hilliard?
Thank you, Ed. Um, I, I just returned from a session today, um, eight to 4:30. But it's, um, very informative, um, and everything. But, uh, what our role, uh, as, um, indicated, uh, through the information that we receive from the Mississippi School Board Association, they want each board throughout the state to participate in the legislative, um, information legislative program for the 2022 session. And how do we participate? We participate by completing the, the information that was mailed to us, uh, the survey. There's a survey that was mailed to each of us. And we are to complete this survey by, we, um, Dr. Seback and Dr. Green and I have, uh, discussed, uh, set up some dates for you to act on this. And, uh, we want to get your input, board members, by October the first. We want to get your input, and then we will take that information and compile the information and then have it ready for a discussion on the 19th of October, where we can make sure that we get our information back into, um, the Mississippi School Board Association, get that information back to them by the 19th of October. Uh, our voice is very important in this, uh, activity. Uh, we, by doing this, we will help to determine what the legislative program is for the state of Mississippi. And I can't think of anything that is more important, especially during this time, that we will, um, we will participate in this activity. So we are asking you, uh, Rosalyn hasn't been told that she's gonna receive this information, and we will, we will get with her, but she doesn't mind. Um, so I think, of course, if you have any questions, uh, you could ask, um, either one of us, uh, Dr. Green, Dr. Seback, or me, and we will assist you in that effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. Um, and again, just appreciate your leadership on this and emphasizing the point, how important it is that Jackson Public School Board, uh, and by extension, the district's priorities are represented in the Mississippi School Board Association's legislative agenda. Um, so thank you again for that. And I believe Dr. Green is gonna assist with the electronic survey. So we received a, a physical copy. Um, Dr. Green's gonna create, i- i- in his team, will create a, a, an electronic copy so that we can compile the results efficiently to facilitate discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with board members, whether it's online or, or on paper, just to, to get the responses, and we'll compile from there. But we'll work with you to get it done.
Thank you for that assistance.
I know my board members.
Um, and then just one other, uh, board member report. Um, the Finance Committee, the Budget and Finance Committee did meet on Friday. Uh, we, um, went through the findings from the Mississippi State Auditor. Um, and again, this, the, the program, the, the meeting was over the public, it was livestreamed. Um, and so again, uh, I think, oh, the, the, my general takeaway from that was that, um, there, there were some findings, actions are being taken to, um, ensure that systems and controls are in place that those, so they don't become repeat findings. Um, and just want to extend appreciation to the team for a lot of work that, that goes into the audits and, and responses. So with that, we will move on to our next information item, um, which is a review of the MOU between the Juanita Sims Doty Foundation and Jackson Public Schools. And I believe Dr. Merritt is gonna present this information.
Great evening to Dr. Seback and board members. Dr. Green, you have before you a review of the MOU between Jackson Public School District and the Juanita Sims Doty Foundation for a mentoring program. This mentoring program will, will be housed at three of our middle schools, Blackburn, Brinkley, and Powell Middle School. Uh, there will be, uh, 20 participants per school. And just to give you a little history of this program, uh, we've had the Juanita Sims Doty, or the A-Team program in the district for approximately 10 years. Um, it started off just being an all-male program. Uh, when they merged with the Evers Institute, they included in, um, females. And so it's a very diverse mentoring program at this time. Um, and talking with Dr. McCullough today, they just arrived back from California and visiting, uh, with Mrs. Evers, and she was inquiring about the program and look forward, uh, to continuing to support the district, um, with the implementation of this program. So you have it before your review, are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, are there any questions? Dr. Merritt, um, one, uh, question I have, um, I was, first of all, this program's been in the district for at least a decade, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Um, and I know that you've looked at the effectiveness of it and student and parent satisfaction. What are some of the findings, uh, from that work?
So overall, there's great satisfaction from, uh, students and parents. From the students specifically, they provide very, um, civic and social awareness. And we have found in the review of data that students really have enjoyed those experiences. Of course, this takes place after school, but, um, the exposure that they have received has been, um, very, uh, impressive, and the students are very, um, the reviews from that are very, uh, good.
I, I can sanction that because I have been a part of that program. Uh, worked with the children, Blackburn, and it is the excellent, uh, program.
And of course, I note this is, uh, of no cost to the district or parents or students.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. All right, well, next we will move on to information action items. We have before us the approval of policy G A A J, Required Vaccines and Testing for Employees. And I believe, Dr. Green, you are gonna take this.
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Seback, and board members. The administration recommends the adoption of policy G A A J, uh, which would require vaccines and testing for, uh, JPS employees. As a result of the aggressive Delta variant and the recent data on, uh, its impact on children, specifically those in grades pre-K through sixth grade, the administration is compelled to introduce this policy. Uh, we, the administration and, um, the community, JPS community endeavor to keep the health and safety of our scholars and staff as a priority. Thus, employees, uh, through the approval of, approval of this policy would be required to be vaccinated and, uh, to share, uh, proof of that vaccination or submit to weekly testing. The Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, ADA, and the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Titles Seven in particular, require an exclusion for employees who can show, one, that they are likely to become ill after taking the vaccine, or two, that they have a sincerely held religious belief prohibiting them from, um, receiving vaccinations. Uh, accordingly, these exclusions would be provided to our employees. As outlined in the policy, board members, uh, those individuals who are fully vaccinated and test po- and test positive for COVID-19 would be entitled to paid personal time off, PTO. Unvaccinated employees, um, uh, as the policy states, uh, would not be eligible for the paid time off benefit unless they qualify for the ADA exclusion or substantiate a sincerely held religious belief against vaccinations. In addition to requiring, um, employees to be vaccinated or, uh, tested weekly, the district will continue to require that masks be worn by all scholars and staff members, and we will continue other protocols that we've already implemented to ensure our safety, um, while, uh, operating our schools. Um, are there any questions, board members, regarding this policy?
Board members, any questions?
I don't have a question, but I am just, um, very proud and, and glad to see the urgency with which the district has pursued this policy and is bringing it before the board. The bottom line is the, the safety and well-being of our students, our scholars, and our entire community are of fundamental importance to the work that we do. And I, for one, believe this is an absolutely necessary step, and I applaud you, Dr. Green, and your team for moving with urgency.
I affirm that as well. I've been so pleased with how this district has approached, um, our handling of the COVID pandemic. And I'm just, uh, glad that we're moving this way.
Thank you.
I am truly in favor of this policy. Um, you know, I liked the gentleman who spoke. I've had, you know, close relatives that have been affected by this. Thank God I've not been affected yet. And I think that if we are to get a handle on this thing, you know, we must make the hard decisions, and this perhaps is one of the, um, hardest decisions that some people, you know, would have to make, look at it like this. Um, so I too appreciate the urgency with which we've moved, you've moved on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members? I will just, uh, conclude then by echoing similar support. Um, you know, what's clear when we are on seminars with the state health director, um, guidance that's been shared with us from the CDC is masks work, vaccines work, and students need to be in schools. And I think that, um, we have to create the environment for the third to happen. And if they can't be in schools, then we gotta create the instructional environment, which we heard about earlier, to do so. Um, and, and I think that this district is showing tremendous leadership in how we thread the needle on all three of those. And so, um, Dr. Green, uh, commend you, commend the staff, um, and, uh, encourage us to continue, um, to find ways to lead on this effort. I, I don't know that tonight is it. You know, that, that's what we learned, if we've learned anything from the pandemic, is it's not over when we think it's over. And, uh, I think what this board has shown, and we will continue to show, is that if we need to do more to create an environment that prioritizes the safety of our students, of our teachers, of our staff, while maximizing student success, we will be there for you and for your team.
Yep.
So with that, board members, uh, do I have a motion to approve this policy change?
So moved.
I second.
Second.
All right, board members. I'm, I'm just gonna go ahead, I'm, Dr. Luckett was first, so I'll, he'll get the motion. And Ms. Hilliard is closest to me, and, uh, so I'm gonna give her the second. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, the policy change passes unanimously.
Thank you, board members, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. All right, next we will move on to the approval of the Mississippi Employer Assisted Housing Teacher Program and Loan Agreement. Uh, Ms. Sandra Lyons will be here to present this information and action item.
Great evening. To Dr. Green, board member, excuse me, Board President Seback, members of the board, the loan agreement before you is between the Mississippi Department of Education in conjunction with Fannie Mae and the teacher listed in board material. A maximum loan amount of $6,000 is available to an eligible teacher to assist in paying the closing costs of the home, and the teacher must agree to render three years of service to the district. Based on the, based, excuse me, based on this information, the Office of Human Resources is recommending approval of the Mississippi Emplore Housing Assisted Teaching Program Loan Agreement for a teacher at Baker Elementary School.
All right, board members, this is always a fun one to vote on. It's great to support our teachers, um, so if there are no questions or comments, I'll take a motion.
Mr. President, I so moved.
I second.
Okay, Mr. Figures has moved and Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Thank you.
Um, next, we will move on to the approval of the monthly financial report. Uh, it's Margaret Pennell, our interim chief financial officer, will provide the update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, to Board President, Dr. Sevak, board members, Dr. Green, colleagues, and JPS team. Uh, today, the administration is recommending, excuse me, that the board approves the monthly financial report for the month ended August 31st, 2021. The monthly financial report contains the statement of fund balance, the budget status report, the bank reconciliation report, and the district maintenance cash flow report, which you all have in your, in your, uh, packet tonight. The statement of fund balance, a few highlights tonight, the district maintenance fund, uh, has a preliminary ending, uh, fund balance of eleven, of $13,977,025.88, which is approximately about $2.5 million reduction from, uh, from pre- from the previous year, and that's pretty much contributed to, uh, accounts payable items. This year, we, you know, last year, since we weren't really in school doing a lot, we have a lot of construction, uh, expense that is coming in now, and a lot of con- uh, a lot of consultants that are coming on since we do have the, um, instructions are back in, uh, come now for this fiscal year. Child nutrition is also, um, maintaining their, uh, fund balance, which they normally do in order to operate their school cafeterias. The, um, the ESF funds, which probably is our largest, uh, fund balance that's in a negative, uh, far as our federal programs are concerned, is one that, uh, shows a negative balance due to timing of, um, drawdowns, of course, on that end. On the budget status report, um, we are about, on the revenue side, about 8.6% where we are this year. Last year, we were about 8.9% compared to, uh, August of 2020. Our expenditures, right now, we are running about, uh, 1.4%, a little bit above what we were last year. We are at 11.7% this year. Last year, we were at 10.4% as far as expenditures concerned. And as I stated, it's normally because of the different, uh, construction things that we have going on and, um, the, um, consultant fees that we have. On the bank reconciliation report, the one you have is for July 31st of 2021, and all of them have been reconciled in a timely manner. Uh, and we, as I stated before, we are, all of our bank accounts are with a board-approved depositories. On the cash flow report, uh, it shows an ending balance of roughly about $1.6 million compared, compared to last year, which $957,000, uh, in August of 2020, which, uh, also, we have higher expenditures there, and normally, uh, they are because of accounts payable. And cash flow is a little different from the expenditures as a whole on that piece. Any questions on the, uh, monthly financial report?
Board members, any questions? Ms. Purnell, I have one question. Um, so in, with the numbers that you just shared, our spending is a little bit ahead of where we were last year. Um, the, the explanations that you shared make sense to me. Um, do you have any concerns that while they're ahead of where they were last year, that we would need to amend the budget at any point because we are, are we spending beyond what we budgeted, or is this, are we, are we staying within what we budgeted? Again, it's just more than last year because circumstances have changed?
I believe it's due to the circumstances that we had. Last year, we didn't have in, in-person learning, uh, going on, so I think it's because we have everything going on now, and because the construction is going on a little bit faster on the, um, burn construction that we had. So we have a lot of construction expenses that are, are hitting that we didn't have last year. They were starting, but, you know, with, uh, COVID and everything else, so some of those things weren't just able to be able to actually do.
Right.
And we are within the budget at this point, so I will state that. We are still within the budget.
Right.
And, uh, at this point, so if it needs to be amended, we will definitely address that in finance committee.
No, that sounds good. And it was really the first part I was looking for that, that were in line.
We are in line.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, well, oh, we got a, uh, let's see, we do need, this is an action item, board members, so, um, I didn't combine these tonight, so we'll just go ahead and, uh, we'll vote on these as we work through them. So if we could get a motion to approve the monthly financial report.
So moved.
Uh, Dr. Luckett has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The motion.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Purnell. Um, I believe you have the next one as well, which is an approval, a request for an approval to increase the price of adult meals.
Yes, um, board members and Dr. Sevak and Dr. Green, colleagues as well, um, the administration is requesting approval to allow the child nutrition department to increase their adult meals for '21, '22. And with this one, um, due to the cost of the food and supplies and different things that are going up, they have not requested a, an increase, uh, for the last three years. So what they are requesting is, uh, for the breakfast meals to go from $2.50 to, uh, $3, and for the lunch meals to go from $3.50 to $4. So this is a 50 cent, uh, increase that they are asking for, and so that's the, what the administration is asking on behalf of child nutrition. Any questions?
Any questions, board members? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I so move.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Hilliard has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Purnell.
Thank you.
Uh, approval of the agreement between Mulva Hill Enterprises for Professional Services and the Jackson Public School District, Dr. Cook will present this information.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Board President, Dr. Sevak, to the board members, uh, Dr. Green, superintendent, JPS team, uh, the administration is recommending and requesting approval of the Mulva Hill Enterprises for Professional Services as a consultant for the Jackson Public Schools' Career Development Center. Uh, the enhancement and training courses are part of the overall local plan for CTE programs in the Carl Perkins Act. And Mulva Hill Enterprises, they offer support and training specifically on CTE programming, administrative processes, and compliance monitoring. These learning engagement sessions will cover general and specific CTE professional development topics, career academy support, and networking connections with our business and industry to meet our workforce development goals and objectives. And, uh, our, our local plan allows our district to continue offering CTE services in accordance with our state plan under Carl Perkins Act, and the local application for fiscal year 2022 did include, uh, in-service training in our federal budget allocations. And, uh, the evaluation will be, uh, session evaluations completed by all of the participants immediately following each of the training sessions, and additionally, surveys will be used to gather on the consultant's effectiveness, uh, from the business industry and computer, and, uh, community partners.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Board members, any questions? Dr. Cook, I did have a question. So my understanding of this contract, i- is it a, like a train-the-trainer contract, uh, or, or, or is it like a professional development? Mulva Hill Enterprises is providing support to the staff of the Career Development Center to, is that the right understanding?
Uh, yes, sir, it's comprehensive. Um, Mulva Hill Enterprises, uh, Mike, Michael Mulva Hill, the director, he's the former, uh, state, uh, CTE director, so, uh, in his professional development, he's able to provide for both staff, administrative staff, uh, all the components to ensure that we're in compliance, uh, with the CTE regulations with Carl Perkins funds, and, uh, ensuring that we're, uh, implementing our programs. And that's through professional development for our staff and for the administrative team as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, board members, um, can we get a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Ms.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Johnson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Cook. Next, we will move on to the approval of the agreement between Mill Creek Schools and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Bingham Gibbs will present this information.
Good evening, Board President, board members, Dr. Green, and team JPS. The Office of Exceptional Education Services is presenting for approval the collaborative agreement with Mill Creek Schools in Pearl. Mill Creek Schools is a private facility recognized by the Mississippi Department of Education as an approved educable child placement facility. The purpose of this agreement is to establish working procedures in the provision of services at Mill Creek Pearl Treatment Facilities for the district scholars eligible for exceptional education services.
Thank you, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. Board members, any questions about this agreement? Thank you, Ms., uh, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. I know this is a renewal and, um, I believe we have, well, it's actually a low number of students, so I'm not gonna say the number of students, um, but I just appreciate the information you shared, um, around.
And we're really excited that that is a low number.
Yeah, that's.
So we're excited about that.
Very well taken. Um, okay, board members, uh, is there a motion to approve this, this, uh, agreement?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, uh, Ms., I believe that was, Dr. Hairston moved and Ms. Thompson seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. Um, next, uh, Dr. Nalls will present information on, uh, lead partner of Edgy Stars' practice support, and then, um, we will vote, Dr. Nalls, and then, uh, if you could just, I, I know you'll, you have an agreement between Alcorn State University and Jackson Public School District as well.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Sevak, board members, Dr. Green, and our JPS team members. Uh, the administration is seeking approval of the, of Edgy Stars LLC to be the lead partner for practice support for the 2021-2022 school year. Edgy Stars will provide practice subject area testing support in the areas of elementary education grades four through six, special education, and early childhood education pre-K and K, excuse me. These services are being provided in conjunction with other district grow-your-own initiatives to support provisionally certified JPS educators with meeting requirements for standard certification, which in turn leads to retention.
Thank you, Dr. Nalls. Board members, any questions about this engagement?
I just wanted to say I'm so glad to see the, the good work coming from this district. Thank you, Dr. Nalls and your team.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston. Um, Dr. Nalls, there was a data point that I think it's important to share with the public about the effectiveness of the program. What, what percent of JPS, um, teachers, that, I believe it was teachers, right, that go through this training? What percent of them were able to pass the praxis after going through this, this engagement?
So, prior to the pandemic, uh, we ended into a similar agreement with the predecessor of this program, which was Schoolhouse 21, for teachers for support in the praxis core. And, uh, we had 35 teachers to sign up, and as a result of them participating, even through the pandemic, uh, all 35 of those teachers who participated ended up passing their praxis core requirements, uh, for certification, so 100%.
Great.
I just wanted to give you opportunity to lift that up.
Thank you.
A hundred, 100% is pretty good.
Yeah.
All right, well, board members, um, if there's no other questions, uh, I'll take a motion on the Edgy Stars' praxis support for '21, '22.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Hairston has moved, Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, Dr. Nalls.
Thank you. Um, next, uh, the administration is seeking approval of the memorandum of agreement between Alcorn State University and Jackson Public Schools for the placement of student interns in our district. Um, this also falls under the, uh, guise of recruitment and retention in an effort to be able to, uh, recruit and retain student interns who are working on their standard certification through traditional means, uh, to become teachers within our school district.
Great, thank you, Dr. Nalls. Board members, any questions? I'll just make one comment. I, I really appreciate the effort to include a diverse set of schools. It feels like there's a different university coming up here next week, and whether it's predominantly white institutions, our HBCUs, private institutions, the, there, I, I, I just want to commend you for bringing from, resources from across the state.
Absolutely.
Inclusive, thank you, that's the word.
The, the goal is, is, is at least statewide inclusion, and so once we get a steady slate of student interns from across the state coming in, uh, then we can start to even look at our neighboring states as well to try to get some interns in, so.
Great, thank you. Board members, is there a motion?
I so move.
I, I second.
Um, Ms. Hilliard has moved, Ms. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Nalls.
Thank you.
Um, next, we have an agreement, uh, approval request for the agreement between Crock Leadership Associates and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Merritt?
The administration is recommending, uh, for approval, the contract between Jackson Public School District and Crock Leadership Associates. Uh, Dr. Barbara Crock is a veteran administrator, uh, who provided leadership support to assistant superintendents and, uh, other staff members for the, about the last two years. Very quality and evidence-based support, um, and we are just recommending for your approval tonight, um, to continue with this service and support to our assistant superintendents.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, are there any questions about this agreement? All right, hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Mr. Figures had moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, board. Next, we will move on to consent agenda items, finance. Um, board members, I actually do have questions about one item, um, and it is item H? Oh, I missed it. We do have a district-to-district transfer. I thank you, um, uh, Dr. Thompson Griffith, this is an, I don't know if you, yeah, move, just come on up and just let us, let, let the public know what this is. Uh, we have approval for a district-to-district transfer. Good evening.
Board President Sevak, Dr. Green, board members, the Office of Data and Accountability presents for your approval tonight our district-to-district transfers for those students who are incoming to Jackson Public School District and those students that are outgoing for Jackson Public School District. Any questions?
Board members, any questions? Thank you, Dr. Thompson Griffith. Uh, will take a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Okay, next, board members, we are in consent agenda items, finance. Um, before we vote on this, Ms. Purnell, I would like, I do have a question about the approval of a single-source purchase of the Elements curriculum. Um, so this is a consent agenda items for finance, and so, um, if, maybe if you could present the, uh, what the, the information is, and then I'll ask my question, and then we'll take a, if there's, unless it needs to be voted on separately, we'll just vote on the slate for kind of consent agenda.
Okay, um, I, I thank you again, Dr. Sevak. I am, uh, bringing up Dr. Bingham because she's the one who has the, brought the information on the sole source, so I will let her go through the detail of that, and any other questions I'll ask.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Um, the Office of Exceptional Education Services is presenting for approval, um, the sole source request for the purchase of the Elements curriculum to be used with high school scholars with disabilities who are working toward the alternate diploma. The Elements curriculum is designed for high school scholars with disabilities. It has grade-level content and is age-appropriate in an easy-to-read format. The curriculum is aligned to the Mississippi alternate standards. It has a teacher resource edition, as well as, um, it has the scholars' workbooks and handbooks. Um, the teachers can design- The teachers can design the instruction for the scholars' unique needs. They progress independently with standard-aligned self-explanatory lessons, as well as it allows them to get a greater, a deeper understanding of the content area. During this process, the, the high school division, we reached out to several of our current vendors that we have in the district, like McGraw-Hill. They have resources, but not a curriculum. We also reached out to, I'm gonna get this for you, Pearson Ed. At this time, they do not have a curriculum. And then the last one, we reached out to... Sorry if we're not having this in order. Yeah, McMillan. And they, and we reached out to them just recently, last month. And they, they do not have a curriculum designed for alternate curriculum as well.
Okay, now, that is great, that is all very helpful. And, and board members, the reason why I pulled this one out for discussion was we just had an audit finding about how we dealt with the sole source contract. And so, it sounds like if our, in terms of the measures we've taken to ensure it meets the guidelines, i- is, is that what it is to reach out to other vendors? Have we, have we done everything, when the auditor comes back to look at this sole source, do we feel like we'll be in compliance?
Yes, we do. That was one of the things that we did, that was one of the things that we did talk to the Office of State Auditors about. And what they were telling us, that we didn't have the, the proof or the information of showing what we had actually done the legwork of asking about who else can do that service, or if they couldn't do the service that we were asking for, that we did reach out to other people. And on, on another note on this one, I think this one will be fine because it is under the $50,000 threshold. But what we did, we did, we still said we want to put it to that, you know, we want to get it up to that level regardless of it, since it is a single source. We want to go the extra mile to making sure that we do everything that we can do to make sure we don't get that fine in again.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Purnell and Dr. Bingham Gibbs. That, that's all exactly what, what, at least I needed to hear.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that, board members, will take a motion to approve the consent agenda items for finance?
I so move for the approval of the consent agenda items, finance.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda item general. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we have had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item general?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Johnson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda item personnel. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we have had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item for personnel?
I move.
Second.
What's that? Dr. Hairston? Dr. Hairston moved, Ms. Hilliard seconded. All in favor?
That was Ms. Johnson, I believe, Attorney Johnson.
Oh, that was Ms. Johnson. Okay, Ms. Johnson has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Board members, we do have a, we do have an executive session item, so we'll take a motion to close the meeting to consider going into executive session.
I move that we close the meeting to consider going into executive session.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for all of your work that went into tonight.
Thank you, team.